Good evening. Is it on? Wonderful. Good evening. Welcome to the Tula County Commission meeting held at, what are we, in the council chambers of the Tula County? Where are we? Tula County building. I was looking for the address on my paper, but it's not here. So either way, whatever the address is. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance, and we'll have Councilman Kendall Thomas lead us in the pledge, please.
My pledge of allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. When nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So we will have a roll call, and I believe Commissioner Dow is online. Commissioner Dow, you there? We'll let him come in. Commissioner Beckstrom?
Here.
Mr. Stetz?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Bartholomew?
Here.
And Commissioner Agar?
Alder.
Alder, sorry. I got the A right. My apologies. Alder and Commissioner Hope is here. Thank you. Thank you very much for being here and sacrificing your time and resources. It's absolutely amazing. It's all about the paycheck. So, well, that's so, sorry. So the next order of business is the minutes of the last regular stated meeting of April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. Is there any additions, corrections, amendments to those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the minutes from April twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five as written.
I'll say it.
Wonderful. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And, did you say that? Wonderful. Besides me, I wasn't there. It passes unanimously. Thank you. The second order of business is under subdivisions, S U B two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-six. I'm not sure who she is, but she's dressed really nice. But we're gonna ask Trish to, are you okay?
Yeah, we're good.
We're gonna ask Trish to handle that piece of business.
Perfect. Yeah, so Trish the planning staff presenting S U B two thousand twenty-five dash zero-two-six. This is a subdivision in Stansbury Park, so it's by Skylar Tolbert, which is Ivory. They're requesting, it's technically a twenty-six lot subdivision, but it's only twenty-five residential lots, so they'll have one alpha lot for open space. And like I previously mentioned, and the last one is that their open space areas have already been met. So for them to keep offering these is just a benefit to Stansbury Service Agency. So they have, yeah, so all of the reviewing agencies have approved this preliminary plat. And so just quick little thing for the development agreement, so that in the development agreement, it says that it'll allow any lot size. And it should allow for up to a thousand and fifty lots when it was all at buildout. So, and I think they've only got maybe two more phases left. So, and so including currently, and including this plat, they'll have nine hundred and sixty-three single-family lots. And so, yeah, just recommend that you approve the preliminary plat for Sagewood Village fourteen.
Um, I, yeah, so I'll move to open the public hearing.
Okay.
Yes, that's right. It's open. Is there anyone like to come and speak to this piece of business? Anybody online? Well, seeing none, then I'll close public hearing. So that said, Commissioners, is there any questions? And I think the applicant is online, correct?
I don't think they are.
Okay, no worries. Is there any questions, concerns?
I do have a question. Apparently it's part of an overall development. It's just the last few lots, but my concern when I went to see it was that I would have thought that they couldn't start developing this particular set of last eight or ten lots, whatever it is, until they got approval from us. I can see that they have begun development. There's a number of holes dug. Is that okay?
Are you sure it was that area and not that one next to it? Because that phase next, right next to it would be like by, what is that road?
Yeah, thirteen, phase thirteen, it's already.
I think that's eleven.
Isn't eleven there?
I can't remember.
Thirteen based on the number.
So, yeah, like the Mallard Drive and Peregrine, they're, that's the phase before. So it could be that that you're seeing, and those have been all approved.
Do you have a hand up online? However, Commissioner Dow has been trying to talk to us and it's not coming through. We can try this, Mr. Timothy, and see if we can hear him, but if you would like.
Sure. As long as it means protocol with it not being public hearing anymore, I'm fine with it. Copy that. Okay. Cool.
I've been trying to figure out the mic.
Open it again, I guess.
So Mr. Timothy, can you hear us and can you speak?
No, we cannot hear you.
We can't hear me either.
We don't have audio.
So it's not my system?
No.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Timothy. I know you raised, rose risen, raised your hand, but we cannot hear you.
Does that allow them to type again?
I think she's trying to type a message here now.
Like, Michael's trying to speak now, too.
Yeah, we just can't hear.
Interesting.
So he'll let them know to just type in the chat any comments they may have.
Okay. So Mr. Timothy and Commissioner Dow, if you have any questions, would you please type it in the chat message so we may address it accordingly? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Timothy is with Ivory.
Wonderful.
If you, if you could tell me on the map where you think I missed, saw what I was seeing in person?
Yeah, so just to the north and to the east, that's one other phase right, right there, and they are currently building those out. So it might be those that you could be seeing because they're just so close.
With your little, which, which, from that yellow spot where you think I was seeing?
Just that road right above it, Peregrine Drive, and then the, it comes down on the side of it, so.
Let's be sure, look at the yellow.
Yeah, so this is what I just. And this is twenty-six lots, correct?
Yeah, twenty-five residential. So it is this phase. And I can move her around and I can.
I could have been wrong. Okay.
You said they had lots and vehicles in this space.
All right.
Probably the other one around it. It's just so close. There's, they're like, because they're little tiny lots, too, so they're, it could be, huh?
I could have been deceived by my perception. That's mine.
Great. So any further questions or comments? Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve. Sorry, go back to the top. Sub, uh, two zero two five zero two six subdivision, sorry. With the twenty-six lots, uh, according to the staff recommendations that the, um, to approve the preliminary plat.
Okay, so it's been motion by Commissioner Scott to approve S U B two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six with the recommended staff recommendations for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Beckstrom. We'll do a roll call vote. Nah, shoot, I can't do Commissioner Dow. Well, actually, Commissioner Dow, if you can hear me, put a okay in the chat.
Or raise your hand.
Or raise your hand, something. Wonderful, aye, he's in. Commissioner Beckstrom? Yes. Commissioner Stetz?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartholomew?
Yes.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hope says yes. So that passes unanimously. Thank you. All right. The next order of business is a conditional use permit, excuse me, C U P two thousand twenty-three dash one-one-six. And I believe Trish will introduce that as well.
Yeah, so this is a conditional use permit for a gravel pit operation from Staker and Parsons. And we do have applicant online, so they can type in any comments that they feel necessary and we'll get to those. But so this is located in the Bauer area, so they're calling it the North Bauer Pit, which is just fairly close to our landfill and the gravel, other gravel operations in that area. It's a hundred acre property, and so they plan to do a five, a five-phase project with that. They are going to build half of Third Road adjacent to that property, so that is just a requirement that we have for those developments in that area. And all the reviewing agencies have approved it, and so the staff just recommends, just for clarity sake, that we put these conditions in place is just, so number one, before operations of each phase, the correct bonding is in place for that phase. Two, that renewals of the State Department permitting is submitted to staff upon expiration of that permit. Because I think they have like a six-month-long period of time, and I think they can extend it. So just make sure that we get those in before that it's ex, like, upon that expiration. And then number three is ensure that the five-year plan is updated and sent to staff before that five-year plan expiration date.
Sorry, I'll tell her a picture.
Oh, you're good.
I have a question, though. And maybe it's for the applicant. We've talked before about switching the Bauer Road where it comes out on thirty-six from the existing location, moving it north. So it ties in where the jail is. Is this going to happen at this phase?
No, no, not with this one. They don't touch that north road.
Okay.
So when the county is prepared to put that in, we'll have that road that comes up through. But there is a section of Bauer Road that's vacated. Yeah. So where our proposed road is, that borders Teeds, it'll go straight across the South Mountain Road, right? And then there's a section of the Bauer Road that's been vacated, so there's actually no access to there quite yet because that little section has been vacated. So they just come into that normal Old Bauer Road, same as you get to the landfill, and then they turn up. That's their access right there.
Okay.
Okay, I've also got a question.
Do we do that now or do we do public hearing first?
How do you want?
Is it how, is it okay? Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My question is regarding the question that came up last night in the county council meeting. Class D roads. So is, is that a concern we have that they come, come in on, on a gravel road? And that could be an issue as far as who uses the road and who can't use the road? Is that something we're concerned about as a county at all?
No, this isn't a class D.
It's not?
Yeah.
How is it different?
Class, this one is maintained. Not all gravel roads are class D.
Okay. That's the answer? Okay, all right.
It's how they're maintained.
Unmaintained. Okay.
It's maintained, right?
That it'll be made. Like the property owner.
That's my question. Thank you.
So that's not a class D.
Protocol or not, my, my main concern is turning lanes on and off, especially getting on. There isn't one. I travel this road, does not need that exact area, and it's a pain in the arse to get Kilgore trucks out of our way, and they have a turn lane. There's no turn lane here. They're packing rope trucks out there. That's not only safety, but it's congestion. It's gonna be horrible, absolutely horrible.
Yeah, so definitely that's probably a condition you can put in place. They did provide a traffic study, which did not call out turn lanes in that area, so I don't know how.
Which is hard to believe because they made Kilgore do it.
Maybe because they're not planning on a big, huge operation, they're gonna be kind of a smaller scale stuff.
But it's bigger than Kilgore.
Well, their phases are gonna be, so they're not gonna run as many trucks as the ones around them at a time, so.
Yeah, they did so big numbers.
Yeah, so you, you can see that all of that in the, in the traffic studies area, but it's, yeah, that's what the traffic engineer, they didn't call those out for.
I like the idea.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, that just bothers me because Kilgore, they started out extremely small, much smaller than this, and they made them do it. And they won't even be as large at full capacity. So I'm really bothered by that study.
Yeah, we can request that Jake look into it.
We can tell you the difference.
Yeah.
Kilgore, because they have direct access onto S R thirty-six, was required to get a permit from UDOT.
I totally agree, but I believe the truck's not there.
And UDOT is the one that, that required the X L D cell lanes because this one is accessing off of an approved road. There has not been input from UDOT. That may be
intersection.
One condition that you place.
Yeah.
That they get some type of approval, approval from UDOT to add this increased traffic to that intersection. But the traffic study itself does not require it. It would have to be UDOT to require. Does that help answer your question?
No, it does. It does. I'm just, and I'm not trying to be difficult. It, it just sucks as it is with, with Kilgore. And already the other pit, the pit that Staker, Staker Parsons owns, right there. Uh, probably, yeah, no, on the same side, but just a little further south. Anyways, we can't open the public hearing before we get out to the remarks. So I'll open the public hearing. Anybody online?
It's just the applicant is on line.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Well, seeing none, then I'll move to close public hearing.
Second.
Commissioners, thoughts, concerns?
I'm sure the same concern. Whether the processes make that.
They can, yeah, something like, have them reach out to UDOT and see if UDOT can give us a written decision on whether they feel like those are necessary or not.
Well, can't we require it?
Uh, no, it's UDOT.
Oh. I mean, because you got Staker, you got this one, and you've got the one on the east side of the road, too, that's just a kitty corner, so.
And that, and that really bothers, so there's a, okay, there's a conflation, sorry, a conundrum, because there's no turn in or, or acceleration from there, and they're right off the road. So what makes me believe UDOT's gonna listen?
All you can do is ask.
We need to ask.
Or, um, you could, um, the council, the commissioner of all traffic, so, but we cannot commit one's.
No, true, obviously. Right, right, right.
I mean, just looking at the traffic study and then the number of vehicles and stuff, it's hard to believe it's not gonna be that many.
Yeah, the, the numbers I saw on the graph did bother me. It's pretty small numbers.
Well, but that's, that's how they all start out, especially on site one, and we're talking by phases.
And that's the problem is, is we have to think with vision.
Right? We're planning.
I mean, that's, and no offense to anyone, but that's kind of how they get away with stuff is they, they start off small.
Twenty-six and two, twenty-four.
This area is industrial, right? And it's gonna start bringing in a lot more further.
And we've already.
You're making my point further than, I mean, I mean, that's the problem.
It's just that, yeah, we have to go off of what the traffic engineer.
I mean, for example, that, and again, we approved it, so it's no fault of our own, but the lot just west of Staker and the landfill was supposed to be a few trailers. Holy crap.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I think they're selling over there. I mean, just saying.
With these negative impacts in the area, you guys can put in mitigation measures to make that. And so if it just starts as a conversation with UDOT, we go from there. And if UDOT says, yeah, we want X L D cell lanes, then we approve it with, make sure you're putting those in before you start phase one. Like, that could be our condition of stuff, right?
Right. And again, this is, obviously have a benefit. I'm just, this is a pure safety, conventional.
Definitely.
It's not that condition, not that.
I mean, because that's, that's hairy. I mean, there's, there's already been accidents at Kilgore and the end Staker, because you got two blind, it's a hill, you got blind on both sides. It's brutal.
Yeah.
Well, and actually, this, this graph suggests just morning peak hours. If you times it by three, that's triples numbers. That does change things a little.
And now, and now it turns out by a hundred acres.
Right.
Does the town consider taking into consideration where all of that area down there is industrial?
I don't believe it does. This is just one company's impact on that road. That's not, and one phase, right?
One phase at a time.
There's five phases, to equal a hundred acres.
Yeah. So as Richard says, it's twenty acres.
Well, I compared the Kilgore's site right there, and then you can say it's Staker's right there.
Does make numbers a lot higher.
And then I don't really need the hill on the east.
It changes.
Aim, aim, and that's right. So that's four in less than quarter mile.
It's not like you have people hanging out there, but still there's vehicles.
Tons of vehicles.
Yeah. You wouldn't, you're not expecting any, any passengers by there, but, but a lot of vehicles.
Okay.
Sorry, trying to get back to my train of thought. I'm prepared to bet.
Well, one thing we, well, no, that doesn't matter.
Okay, I am not prepared to grant preliminary approval for this. I would like to make the motion that we.
That's not it, that's not it.
No, I wasn't. No, 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 no.
Does Michael, did you, are you typing one Michael?
Yeah. I would like to kind of move, I make the motion, we move this to the planning, or the county council for further investigation of UDOT traffic study concerning accelerate. No?
This is a conditional use. Council has no jurisdiction over this. This is planning commission's decision.
Well, but, but, right, but she can make a.
You can table it for more study?
Table it for further study.
Have counsel.
Yeah, you can go ask counsel to, to commission a traffic study, but the council, that's up to the council. He can't commit for them either.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table this item agenda until our August business meeting, so that we can look in, further into the possibility of the county council getting with UDOT and doing a traffic study concerning acceleration and deceleration lanes.
With the, with, I love that. Can you, would you mind adding, with the full-scale operation?
With full-scale operations for all future growth in this area, not just the one business.
Did you see the applicant's comment?
I can't see.
It says there are acceleration lanes at the Old Bauer Road and Highway thirty-six.
No, even on this map, there's not.
There's like a turn.
Yeah, that's not.
Really not.
No, is that further down?
It's just a turn lane.
He's got pictures included in his package, and they're not there.
Right. That's my motion.
So it's been moved by Commissioner Scott to table this C U P at least until the August meeting, so that the county council has time to defer and communicate with UDOT. Now, stop. Point of clarification, you use verbiage and/or have the county do their own traffic study. So I'd like that verbiage added power ready.
Ask the applicant to get permission from UDOT for access at this location, and you want the county council, right, to do their own traffic.
Correct.
You want me to restate all that? Mr. Chairman, I move that we table C U P two zero two three dash one, one-six until the August business meeting. During that time, we will confer with county council about the possibility of having UDOT get with the applicant.
The applicant get with you. You don't, you don't want counsel yet.
Oh.
You want the applicant to go to you.
We want the applicant to get with UDOT.
Regarding the access at this location.
Regarding acceleration and deceleration lanes at this location, access lanes at this location.
And you would like the county council to look at hiring their own traffic.
And we would like the county council to look at hiring their own traffic study that encompasses all future growth in this area, not the one company. One face.
All right.
And Dow had seconded somebody to ask him.
So Commissioner Dow, would you re, would you be willing to resecond the amended motion? Second, so if in motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Dow, we will take a roll call vote. Commissioner Dow? Commissioner, thank you. Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Mr. Stetz?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Bartholomew?
Yes.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hope is a yes, so that is unanimous. Thank you. The next. The next, yeah, we're not there. The next item is rezones, so it's an R A Z two thousand twenty-four dash one-five-nine, and Trish will have that as well.
Um, yeah, so this one, it's got a couple of numbers, so just to clarify, because it's already on a council and they changed their numbers. So on our planning commission end, it's two thousand twenty-four dash zero-five-nine. Council will know it as ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash oh-two. So we've heard this one a couple of times. The rezon request, the applicant did provide some more information on the water study, and he provided a complete change order application. So he has sufficient water rights in that area. The Health Department deems the area feasible. He will just have to get the soil, septic, and water at the subdivision phases. Health Department cannot process those right at this current time. So let's see what else there was, anything new? So your first vote, it was four voted in favor of conditions that the lot sizes are minimum of three acres and that there's documentation from the state water board, which they don't really have, but he did provide that information from the state water department that they're, it's feasible in that area. So and then two voted unfavorable, because it should conform to the general plan or remain five acre minimum. And concerns with water and wells in that area. So council had added that on to yours and just said that he needs to do a general plan amendment, that the county needs to do a general, general plan amendment, and it has been changed, and it is effective already. So it is changed to what your recommendation was, the medium residential density, right? Medium density residential. So, and that's been changed. And so the applicant would just request, because he wants to do the minimum of two acres, which on, on our end, with all the information he's provided, is feasible. So it's just what you guys feel is necessary in that area. Just keep in mind that the city does have, it could be considered high residential, high-density residential right next door. I know there's some active agricultural properties right adjacent to those. So one acre lots larger, I feel like is a, is a decent buffer for, for planning, right? We want to kind of buffer those out, so. I don't know what, what other questions you guys have with this one?
So just to clarify, I was trying So just clarify, um, I was trying to get my stupid phone to work again. The original proposed lot size was what? And then we changed it, right?
Yeah, so the original request was just the our our one, which is a one acre minimum. Um, and then some backup, if you guys decided that a three acre minimum was fair at that point. Um, and I think a lot of that had to deal with water and septic and the location of those, um, as well as just the agricultural areas there, I know Dow had strong feelings about that area there. So, yeah, it's it's really up to you guys, he he could technically go down to one acre lots with the state information he's provided and the water rights he has there, um, and like I said, the health department deemed it feasible, it's just the the septics and the and the studies for that will have to be later on during subdivision phases.
Which is something we already put in place anyways, that study.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
I think Mister Harris is here.
Yes.
Do you have any other questions for Trish, or will you bring the applicant up and ask the applicant?
We can go after.
Uh, Mister Harris, would you mind please?
Jason Harris? I just wanted to clarify, the original application was for one and a half and three acre lot sizes in the subdivision was our initial uh desire. Which after the process we've gone to and where we're at now, we would like to change that to the two acre lot sizes and just be across the board, two acre lots, we feel like it being next to the high density, that's a fair buffer amount, but I want, that's all I was looking to.
No, no, thank you for that question, I like that, thank you.
Is it still a plan to share wells? No more than one well in five acres?
Yes, that's correct.
And how does that work with the shared well, how is it expenses and repairs and all that?
There's a, there's a uh shared well user agreement, that the uh both, you know, property owners, it it resides with the deed and so both property owners have that, that spells out responsibility for, you know, anything future that would be necessary to the well casing itself. Uh, each home has their own pump that goes in that casing, and their own piping and power that comes out to each property separately, so they're just sharing the hole in the ground to pull water out of, that's all.
And when the well goes dry, they both pump together. They cover the car, there's actually several um subdivisions in Pine Canyon with shared wells, so. We haven't had it come before us.
So just a, just a curio- just a curiosity question, just only because you didn't mention it, the casing itself. So what happens if that goes bad?
If the casing were to go bad, then both i- in the shared well user agreement, they are both responsible for costs there.
I I thought so, but I wouldn't show it, so.
Yeah, the the two subdivisions we've done previously with shared wells and and other developers have done shared wells, I've never heard of.
So it's not a surprise.
An issue with with the shared wells, you know, having having trouble.
So is the drawing we have here, there's shows ninety nine lots, those ninety nine lots is?
I wanted to clarify that that is part of the traffic impact study. Only, that is all, and so when we did the traffic impact study, we did it on potentially uh looking at having it annexed into Tulacity and doing a high density subdivision there, and so we didn't have that traffic impact study amended for this application, because we felt like it one, it didn't require any additional changes to any of the roadways, and it accommodated that that uh large or those quantity of lots. We've uh submitted for a much less quantity of lots in this application, so it was a conservative uh traffic impact study.
So that that number is not accurate, ninety nine?
No, we're looking for, I believe it's eighteen or essentially eighteen lots in the subdivision, so there is a new plat that was added to the packet that we all received, I think it's the last page in your document.
And these are two acres? And we're talking well per every two.
Yeah, it's very reasonable, and it's actually.
That's the same area as this? Okay, that's much easier to handle.
And this is the fifth subdivision, the one that he's done in the Pine Canyon area, the fifth one that now shares us. Yeah, they've gone back twenty something years, so.
Is it?
That's why I think two acres is good.
We have, we've uh, we're on Mike Zimmerman's schedule, we we have not drilled any test wells yet, we have uh been placed on a on a uh schedule with Mike Zimmerman pending the outcome of of this and the county council. Pardon me?
He he's on the schedule, they haven't done it yet. Oh.
Yeah, we haven't drilled those yet, but.
Kind of funny, because I asked Mike about my place and he told me how deep I was gonna have to drill. That's my question.
I I can tell you Mike's speculation, to me, or what we anticipate drilling there would be based on his experience in in the area and and that, that uh will probably be somewhere close to seven hundred feet.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, in the Heritage State subdivision we did in Pine Canyon, uh, we're about six fifty on those. They're all working great.
So you're gonna drill eight and a half wells? Eight and a half, okay.
It'll be nine.
No, you should have known septic reach property.
With the uh.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, so the the alternative septic systems, which are much better for the groundwater than uh, you know, than a traditional or even agricultural use that it's currently being used for.
Awesome, any other questions, concerns, for the applicant or Trish?
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Uh, the the time is appropriate, please ask. Cannot see, so tell me. Contact your wagon.
Why would we consider any less when a neighboring municipality has expressed concerns about their well being negatively affected by nitrates and phosphates gravitating downstream?
Well, that would be with the septic system, right? And I believe that the septic system is the newer one where it mitigates that. It's at a higher cost, but the performance is better.
He's addressing the letter that Tulacity gave to all of you at first public hearing.
I I I, so I do recall that now, and then I also find it interesting how Tulacity can offer such a letter, but yet allow such larger density development next to the same property they referred us to, so that's quite interesting. I I understand that, but still, it's right next to their well, that was their problem.
But, we are, we already have it. They already have that on Erickson Road. Down below, so where they bought the property with the septic system and put the well over the septic system, so. There's that. We have an a public hearing?
Uh, not according to this, we are not.
Oh, we had it last time.
Yes.
Correct.
Thanks for keeping me off, so.
No, I I remember that now, because I was chair, because you were not.
Yes, 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 um. Great, any further questions or concerns? If not, I would be prepared to hear a motion.
I do have a question for Trish. On the recommendation, it's planning staff suggest the commission and consider zoning conditions. I thought that we had already changed that with the general pa- plan change, is that not correct?
No, no, so this will be attached to the rezone, uh, you don't attach those into the general plan, but um do consider um uses such as uh dwelling unit density, uh, building square footage, height of the structures and I just wanted to clarify ADUs, because that'll double your septics.
So.
Yeah, and the minimum loss size.
So two things, one, the the house square footage is already set forth currently, correct? So we just adapt that.
Based on the acreage?
The house square footage, is that what you're saying? Oh, yeah, so you can do the building square foot per lot, like you can only make them so big.
Right, but that's already, that's already set.
Well, yeah, but with two acre lots, they can still put with six thousand square foot home in there and like, you know what I mean, it's still a big lot.
I think with a six thousand square foot home on an acre lot, I mean.
Uh, yeah, so you guys can.
No, I get, I just wanna cause more conundrums of what we tried to figure out, tho- those rules are already in place, is my point, we don't need to.
To a point, yeah.
Curtis, we don't need to hash that out any further. The second thing is concerning ADUs.
That would be a big concern.
Well, but the problem is, is as a point of order, the state has and is going to uh make it so it's not our concern and allow it to happen. So.
We have to allow, we currently, as what state code is saying, we currently have to allow internal ones. They haven't come forward with detached ones yet, but we could probably see that happening in the next few years, they just haven't yet, so.
This year.
We put those conditions in now, and if the state changes it.
Right.
Then we change it, but if they don't, then we're covered, either way, like.
Got it.
Wouldn't those can, conditions on the ADU already be set by the septic and water?
No, no.
Like, I mean, if if one of, someone buys property, builds a house, and they come back in three years and they wanna build an ADU, they have to have septic and water for the ADU. So do the, do they have enough with what's gonna be placed in there? Or will they have to upgrade, or like?
They could always.
Those have, things have to be addressed when they come in.
divert more water if they needed to, I didn't calculate what he changed, there was two of them that he changed, I don't know, maybe Jason can explain that, but um there there might be able, he might be able to have a few in the area, I don't think he'd have, he'd be able to have enough water for every lot to do it, but you can always bring more water in if he has more somewhere else, right, so the main concern in that area is the septic. And how mu- how much do you want to put into the ground in that area, you know, your, what's some of your concerns already were? That, so I'm just saying, just consider those as part of.
And I, I think, I mean, I think this has come up before with ADUs on septics.
Every time.
Twenty people can live in the house.
And shared wells, the the shared wells and stuff, remember we had, um who was it, that came before?
We had. Down the road.
Yeah, um, he had to go through a whole big thing with the state to make sure he had enough water and stuff too, so it's a possibility. There's just a lot more that they're gonna have to do, so, I mean, if you wanna allow the ADUs, it's up to you guys, just, I was just putting it out there.
Detached.
Those are, that's the type of uses that you guys can restrict, or put conditions on.
I had another comment, uh, on uh page sixty. It says county council's decision unanimously requested planning commission look into changing the general plan first.
Yeah, that's the.
Okay.
What was the wording on that change?
Just let it's medium density residential.
So when they say that, that's just the plan for this subdivision, that's not the county plan?
No, they only changed that, it's forty acre piece.
That makes sense, but when I thought we were voting, and the concern was that we were demanding that they need to work so hard for it, that didn't make any sense. Well, it's just the plan for this.
But it's a, for this property. It's a living document, so we're gonna be doing this.
And so Commissioner Alder, for the benefit of you and anyone else who's listening for that matter, the 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 general plan for the county is a guideline. It's not code, it's not law, it's it's nothing, it just gives us a starting point to, one, logistically handle growth, but two, set us up for any funding we may get in the future and vice versa, right? But it can be changed, but the cool thing about it is it gives us variables to the plus, to the minus of the zone that's currently close. Which I think a lot of people forget, because that is the options people have, right? And so if you take, I hate saying this, but if you take a motion out of that and look at the logistics to be in Poole Forest, and if it's according to the guidelines that we approved in the general plan, how can you say no? I'm not saying right wrong, but that's that's the position where you put it, right? Right, exactly, and and maybe people do, but then we wanna fight through ourselves with the plan being approved, that's what I'm trying to say.
And that's what we did.
That's why we wondered, we didn't, we didn't change the general plan.
No, we amended that.
Right.
Just amended it for that three acre piece.
This is correct, which is what the general plan gives us. And that's everyone's right, that's why you position rezoning, that's why you position density and all these things.
So was that, is that not kind of what we thought we were changing?
Yes.
That you said.
Yes. Yeah, and I get hung up, I take it personal, it's emotional, because we worked so hard on it, but then you remind me that. It is how it should be. Like it or not.
The emotion would make differently, but I'll take that. Okay, cool, um, that said, I am still prepared to hear a motion.
I'm prepared to make one. Imagine that, um, I move that we approve re- uh, do we, do we recommend a positive? Or do we recommend it to the county council?
Where's the bottom say? Right there.
Recommend that that, um, we give a favorable recommendation to the county council on this rezone two zero two four dash one five nine, with the CUP, with the condition, there is no um detached ADUs.
Oh, two years.
Oh. Oh, I thought that was part of it, two acre minimum, sorry, I thought that was part of the application.
I have believe it is, but it's good to say it.
Okay.
We just don't have like a two acre minimum.
That's correct.
Awesome.
Okay.
So it's been motion by Commissioner Scott to um recommend
Favorably.
Favorably to the county council, approval for REZ twenty twenty four dash one five nine, with the uh, attached staff recommendations to include uh, lot size minimum two acres and no uh ADUs.
Uh, no detached.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, 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 no detached ADUs, thank you, uh, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Been seconded by Commissioner Beckstrom. Uh, and we'll do a roll call vote, Commissioner Dow? He says no, okay, Commissioner Beckstrom?
Yes.
Mister Stetz?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Bartholomew?
The ADU thing.
Oh.
That's my hangup on the ADU. I'll be a yes.
Commissioner Alder?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hope is a yes.
Commissioner Hope, will you please ask Mister Dow, said, did you reason so young?
Uh, he said, for the reasons mirroring Tulacity's neighbors' concern regarding, my camera.
Regarding septic waste traveling downstream negatively impacting neighboring wells.
Wonderful, well stated, so it passes seven to one, uh, thank you commissioners. Or sorry, six to one, I can't add either, that's alright. Um, look at that, uh. The next item of business is adjournment. Move to adjourn?
So moved.
I thought I heard something too. Okay, so we're good.
I thought you were yelling at us.
Have a good night, everybody, and thanks again for for showing up. She needs you.
I need to send.